We're good? Okay. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us at this regular meeting of the Madera City Council, a special meeting of the Madera Public Financing Authority, and also a special meeting of the Madera Housing Authority. If I can have a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Chairperson Commissioner Andrew Medellin.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Authority Member Commissioner Jose Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Vice Chairperson Cici Foley-Galligos.
Here.
Council Authority Member Chairperson Will Oliver.
Here.
Council Authority Member Commissioner Derek Robinson.
Present.
Council Authority Member Commissioner Charles Rigby.
Here.
And Council Authority Member Commissioner Donald Hawley.
Present.
Sonia, thank you so very much. We do have additional chairs in the lobby, but as you can see, for those standing, we have chairs over here on this side and as well over on this side, so please feel free to grab a seat if you like. We have with us this evening my dear friend from Harvest Community Church Pastor David Votah, who will be giving us the invocation, so if everybody will stand with me, please, for the invocation.
Gracious God, you've brought us all together. A lot of voices that need to be spoken, a lot of hearts that need to be shared, a lot of truth that needs to be told. We pray that you'd give great wisdom to the whole body here this night, and we ask for your just greater wisdom for the good of this city. We love Madera, dear Lord. Thank you for all your provision. As we are in this pretty festive season, we say thank you for all of the joy that it brings. And even in this end of the year, we're coming to a close, and there's been a lot of good hellos and there's been some serious goodbyes, and so we just ask that you would help us with those good things that have entered in and also some of the good things that have we've lost in terms of people or lost in other ways. So, Lord, we pray for our whole city, particularly we pray for our council tonight. Thank you for all the gifts you've given them, the wisdom and the truth that they are able to speak, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Votah. You'll join me in the pledge, please. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to public comment. This will be for all meetings. The first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves and state the subject of their comment. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Is there anybody wishing to speak under this definition of public comment?
Rachel Martin, on behalf of Sierra Valley Almonds. I actually have something for all of you, but it's a timeline as to what they've been dealing with, along with Dave Merchant and other people that he's been pointing, Sierra Valley Almonds, the people that are handling this, too. It's been almost a year since the approval, and aside from that being that I only have three minutes, that's why I had this put up for you. Since 2011, a water meter has been approved also through Lavco because they're county, and they need water simply for washing hands and flushing toilets since 2011. It's still not on there, and I spoke with Dave Merchant myself, and I asked him, you know, to please help me understand why this has been going on so long, and his exact statement to me was leaning back in his chair, crossing his legs and crossing his arms and saying, "I guess we just forgot about it." That, there's no excuse for that. After all that time, after all that contact, and this, that's just the beginning of it, and then you see the timeline of this here. So, Sierra Valley Almonds, of course, if you want to contact anyone, Mark Turman, the owner, would be the one to contact in that, so.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Appreciate you coming down.
I am Mark Turman, the owner of Sierra Valley Almonds. And to give you a little background, we're putting in a brand-new plant, three-and-a-half million-dollar investments here in the city of Madera. We moved several years back, bought the old Bertie plant that had been dilapidated. We put that into service in the county. We currently have one hundred and fifty employees. I'm planning on buying thirty-five, you know, thirty-five more. A couple of years ago, we could have taken this to Sacramento. I was probably, I had a lease in my attorney's hand to review it, and we were going to take this three-and-a-half-million-dollar investment to Sacramento. I talked to my staff. We have an excellent staff of folks, and we started to stay here in Madera, and that building is located in the city. We've been trying to go through the permit process for almost a year. We've had nothing but runaround. I have, you know, two consultants that go from the planning department to the city to the planning departments like a windshield wiper. You talk about financing. This, I have had to use an outside source to do my custom packing while I'm trying to get this permit process done. It's been at least a six-month delay. I can understand the first three or four months, but every month it is costing me between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I have to pay somebody else in Delano to process my almonds because I can't do it here. You take that times six, that's almost three-quarters of a million dollars. That's costing me out of my pocket because I cannot get my permits through the city. The county, no problem. No problem. You walk in there, boom, 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 done. But the city, I don't know what it is. I don't know if they know what they're doing. You go, you ask three people, you get nine different answers. They spoon-feed you the information. Oh, we need this. Oh, we need that. Oh, we need this. Oh, we need that. Well, why don't you tell me upfront, and I'll do it? Tell me the rules, and I'll play by them. I have no problem. But now, we're talking serious money. Where do I go and get reimbursed? That's my complaint. Thank you.
Sir, obviously, you're frustrated, and I know you don't feel like you should have to come down here to a council meeting, but I do appreciate your time and concern. What I'm going to ask of you now is to make sure that my city clerk has your information so that I personally can be in contact with you by tomorrow.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Good evening. Khalid Chadri, 450 South Madera Avenue, Madera 93637. First of all, I want to answer clergy. God helps those who help themselves. Whatever you pray, whatever you do, doesn't matter really, believe me. Okay, now, let's start with whatever went on here. I don't think that, you know, city council really has, you know, you have, you've been hurting our democracy. I don't think that you have a mandate. Democracy is the name of two kinds of mandates. One is moral mandate, other one is technical mandate. You all have technical mandate for sure, but you don't have moral mandate, other than two of city councilmen, councilmen and women, Ms. Galligos and Mr. Rodriguez. The rest were handpicked by the establishment, so please reconsider that. Another thing, tiered water rates have been declared unconstitutional by the Supreme Court of State of California. So what have you done about it? And here, I see, you know, our city attorney, he's not here for us. He's here to cover their wrongdoings. So please do something about it, and please reconsider your mandate. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
My name's Rob DeRan. I wanted to know, bring it up, the issue about some of these roads here in this town, right, are kind of haphazard, you know what I mean? They're kind of, I don't know what's going on with, but Maple Street and Stadium, there's a section of the road there that's, you know, can somebody get hurt, you know what I mean? Going to there, the other day, observed somebody running, they could step in a crack, you know, they could break the tibia bone, whatever, you know what I'm saying? I'm just saying, we're going to fix roads, just fix the ones that need to be fixed. You know what I'm saying? And, you know, I've got a lot of issues, but I just want to bring that up real quick because I ride my bike nearby. But, and also, you know, I don't know what's going on with either, if they're letting, they're saying that bikes are vehicles, to consider vehicles, and, you know what I mean, we need to set a standard or something, you know what I mean, procedures should go about so I want to put some insurance on my bike. And, you know what I mean, what's going to be, you know, citizens going to be letting on, you know what I mean, because I already almost got hit like two, three times, you know what I'm saying? So, either you're going to do it or you don't. You're going to put a bike lane on somebody, you know what I mean, because I don't know if you guys have seen, I go up and down, you know what I mean, I'm going to go until I get my car because there's supposed to be a bike lane there, right? No? Does somebody know the bike lane? I don't know where to go.
If I can suggest, sir, we actually have some personnel from Madera PD that can help you better understand on what the rules of the road are as far as a bicycle, the motorized bicycle and things of that nature.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, it's the procedures going about if somebody's in common sense, you know, it's going to be known out there for the public, you know what I'm saying, because also there's kids involved.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying? If any kid, you know, I want that to happen.
Of course. We're always interested in the safety of everybody.
Well, yeah. Majority is the youth is coming up because they need to be schooled very hard. But also, you know, I don't know what's going on with, is this the place to bring up the water issues?
You can certainly discuss whatever you'd like to discuss, sir, within your three minutes.
I got burned, you know what I mean? I got, because I got an issue going on, and they got proof of this, right? But I don't know, I read in the newspaper, they're sitting about overpaying or whatever the water department, you know what I mean, is sitting back. But I got incarcerated in jail, and I had a bill for water right at a house I was living at on Sixth Street, right? I was sitting near the house, though, but, you know. Anyways, I was incarcerated, and I wrote them a letter, told them that I was incarcerated, they could stop the bill. Now, they should have stopped it, right? If I wrote, I'm the one, my name was under the bill.
That would be something that you couldn't certainly take up with our finance department?
Who, what's, who, who is it?
Where you pay your water bill?
Well, I already went over them, Mr. Mayor, I already did, and they told me, they took my deposit from me.
Okay.
Because they told me that, I don't know, they told me they just, whatever it was, bottom line is, I got burned from a hundred and twenty-five-dollar deposit. On top of the twenty-dollar, I don't know, application fee, just fill out the application for the water. I don't understand all that, you know what I mean? It just seems like money, everyone has to be around money.
Sure. Of course. I don't have any of the details of that, and I don't want anybody to get burned. My suggestion is, is to make an appointment with our finance director at the same place where you pay your water bill, and I'm sure we can hash all this out.
Okay, and then, what about?
And you're very close, you're very close to your three minutes.
Okay, well, then, I'll come back. When's the next meeting, though? Because I've got a list for you guys.
The first Wednesday in January.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think you guys have, you know.
Thanks for coming down. I appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment?
Good afternoon. My name is Joanna Torres. I've lived in Madera my whole life. I wasn't really prepared, but I just wanted to reiterate that you please keep in mind our best interest. Low-income community in Madera, we, we, it's difficult in Madera for the community to have to pay for certain stuff that could potentially be covered if the spending was done differently. I just want to request that you guys keep that in mind. You have seen what's been on the news media. If it's possible, I think it's appropriate if it would be on the agenda for the next meeting, so that way the community is aware of what's going on and can participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. I appreciate it, and I'm sure I can speak for the council when I say that I believe we really do have the best interests of the city in mind. Thanks for reaching out to a number of us on the council and having one-on-one conversations. I really do appreciate that, and hopefully we continue that dialogue. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hello. My address is 2684 Marie Drive, 93637, and I wanted to talk on behalf of the.
I'm sorry, sir, your name?
Justin, I'm sorry.
Justin.
Yes. And I wanted to talk about the behalf of what we do as a community and how we fail on keeping our environment clean. We live in the valley, which is like a major smog bowl, especially with surrounding fires. They just come straight here. We noticed it, I noticed it last year when we have ashes raining down on my car, and the smog was, like, literally turned the sky from blue to orange overnight. So, like, that's ridiculous, and, I mean, like, we, we should do, we should be able to do more, like, and try to battle that, like, because climate change is already pretty big as it is, and as a community, we can go ahead and try to defend or fight back in a way by doing more stuff for the community and educating the community about the effects of how important it is that we get involved with this climate change, because it starts here at home to make a global change, and that's the big thing that I think we need to spend more money on as a city. And if we can go ahead and do that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Justin, very much. And you're absolutely right, that is a very important topic. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment?
I'm Marilyn DeLeha. I live on 610 North G Street. I just want to thank Andy, Jose, and Will for meeting with Madera Votes. We do appreciate your time, and what I do wanted to say was that just keep in mind everything we discussed. We, you know, Madera Votes takes pride in informing people, making sure that they're well-informed and initiate, and I know you guys are accessible, make sure that you guys, I hope the people know that you guys are. And, and we encourage more discussion, and we look forward to having more discussions about issues that have to do with Madera and Madera County and the city.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming down, as I mentioned, to Ms. Torres. I appreciate you reaching out to us and being accessible yourself and your group so that we can sit down and have that open dialogue discussion. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment?
Good evening. I'm Vicki Sloan, 503 North O Street. I haven't heard that many people thought David, Mr. Thule, did a bad job. It was the money that got everyone's attention, not only his position, but several others. Inasmuch as I personally don't have the means, knowledge, or ability to correct the perceived imbalance of the salaries of the positions in question, I know someone who does. Mr. Rigby, did you bother to share with the other council members any of our conversation? That you were given a perfect solution to provide Madera with a qualified individual who was previously an executive-level employee here, who's willing to take on the challenges of the city administrator for a salary that is enough to cover basic expenses, that would save the city between two-hundred-and-seventy-five and three-hundred-thousand dollars a year. Mr. Mayor, is it your habit to ignore requests to speak with you? The person to whom I'm referring tried to contact you. You were unavailable at the time of the call, but were left a voicemail. You didn't return the call, and this offer would have been given to you personally had you returned the call. Were there any alternative solutions considered? We do have a retired city manager living here. We have the retired county CAO. Based on the information moving through the grapevine, your decision to proceed with the current plan is the only option that was entertained? The council is currently facing many things that are going to require careful consideration before moving forward. We need to know that you all are ready to do the right thing, not the easy thing. If you're willing to ignore the savings potential, combined with the experience of the person that I mentioned earlier, and if you fail to make inquiries about alternative solutions, what other situations and solutions needing good decisions would you be willing to ignore, and why? With not a lot of digging, there is an abundance of information available that brings up questions about the recent decisions of the council, Mr. Thule, and the executive-level employees of our good town. I have no intention of listing them right now. My tim would be exhausted at the podium. But I can tell you a couple of things. Councilmembers, you were elected and given the opportunity to sit on the council because the people trusted you to make smart, fair, good business decisions to better our community and the lives of the people who live here, all of us, not just the select few who have been given the generous salary adjustments, increased benefits, or grandfathered into positions which they may or may not be qualified to fill. The people of Madera are watching, we're paying attention, and we're waiting to see what you do. We're not going to go away. I can promise that if you continue down the current path, I'll take the information that's available, and as the saying goes, I'll sing like a bird. And to avoid any confusion, be advised, my best note is an ear-piercing, glass-shattering, attention-getting, high C. Lastly, if the actions dictate that the good people of Madera learn more about the things that have been done or had allowed to be done, getting signatures required for a recall should not be too difficult. Don't make us go down that ugly path. Do the right thing. Don't let us down.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment?
Ms. Sloan, just so you know, to avoid a violation of the Brown Act, I was not going to inform my colleagues of our discussion until the matter was brought up tonight as agenda, so.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment?
I would just like to address something, looking into.
Name an address, please.
Gabriella Angeles, 1088 Saunders Road, Madera, California, 93638. Eleven, sorry. Looking into the information that was provided, and looking into the salaries, looking into everybody who is in charge, who isn't, the council, looking into all the surrounding cities that are growing, that are bringing business in, that are bringing jobs in, that are bringing a growth in economy. It's disappointing to see that all of you are not fulfilling your positions and say that you're not giving the city of Madera what they deserve. I have, I started, I grew up a little bit in Los Banals, and passing through there, year after year, I see it grow. I see it bring business. I see it just expanding crazy. While we sit in a town that is just the same year after year, yes, we have a few new things, great, but it has not improved in the way it should, and knowing that a lot of it is just because of a salary that could help the deficit that we have here in this city, in this town, it's very shocking, and it is disappointing to see every single one of you sit here and just letting it happen, and it shouldn't. It should not be happening at all. And we ask, as a community, as myself, I'm asking, to do something about it. There are different options, and I know they have listed plenty, and I'm asking to please do it. Look at alternatives. Look at what can be done, because you guys are supposed to be doing the right thing for us, and that's all we ask. Help this town grow. Make it something better than what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment?
Good evening. My name is Michelle Garcia. My address is 3016 Fairway Avenue, Madera, 93637. For the sake of time, I'm just going to say, I totally agree with the last speaker. We are a small town. There is no reason why we should be paying excessive salaries when this town has nothing to offer. We have to drive down Highway 99 to get, to shop. There shouldn't be that. We should keep our tax money here. We pay these high salaries for people to just take their money to another county. That's ridiculous. I'm reminded of a quote that I heard someone say, "You woke a sleeping lion, and now you're going to hear them roar." Well, this county's been woken up, and we're going, we're upset. We want change, and if there's no change, then we're going to take it to the, to the voting polls. We'll make a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Anyone else wishing to, I just said, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? Sure.
My name is Jose Gomez, 300 South K Street, Madera, California, 93637. Thank you for giving me the time, and I know there's a big list and a lot of issues to talk about tonight, but I just feel like Madera should come first as a city. I really, I grew up here. I never knew any other city in my life, as living there, feeling just a love for the city, and I feel like Madera has a tremendous potential. It does, and I feel like a lot of the ladies and gentlemen are talking, putting Madera first is just kind of giving us that, the heads up that the potential should be worked with, and we should put Madera first in everything we do. It should be the first thing in our agenda to benefit it, and I'm not trying to put down your work or the agenda you guys have as a, as a group, as a council, but I know that the first interest should be the city. It's people, the people here in Madera are amazing. They deserve the best. We might not be the biggest city in, in the central valley. Sure, we have a lot of competition, like you said, we have to go shop or to another town and invest, you know, I don't know, just different, different needs that we might have to go search outside of Madera, but if we put Madera first, I believe that the Maderans, you know, the people here in Madera will believe in, in the council as well. I just feel like the potential should not be put to the side of what we can be and the way we should be directed to. So, like I said, I know a lot of amazing people here, and it's, it's sad to see that Madera could be much more, and I, we, I have a vision to saying that I want Madera to be the best it can be, and I know you guys can do it if you guys do it for the people and put, put the city first. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment?
Good evening. My name is Michelle Garcia. My address is 3016 Fairway Avenue, Madera, 93637. For the sake of time, I'm just gonna say, I totally agree with the last speaker. We are a small town, there is no reason why we should be paying excessive salaries when this town has nothing to offer. We have to drive down Highway 99 to get, to shop. There shouldn't be that, we should keep our tax money here. We pay these high salaries for people to just take their money to another county, and that's ridiculous. I'm reminded of a quote that I heard someone say, "You woke a sleeping lion, and now you're gonna hear them roar." Well, this county's been woken up, and we're gonna, we're upset, we want change, and if there's no change, then we're gonna take it to the, to the voting polls. We'll make a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Anyone else wishing to, I just said, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment?
My name is Jose Gomez, 300 South Case Street, Madera, California, 93637. Thank you for giving me the time, and I know there's a big list and a lot of issues to talk about tonight, but I just feel like Madera should come first as a city. I really, I grew up here, I never knew any other city in my life, as living there, feeling just a love for the city, and I feel like Madera has a tremendous potential. It does, and I feel like a lot of the ladies and gentlemen are talking, putting Madera first is just kind of giving us that, the heads up that the potential should be worked with, and we should put Madera first in everything we do, it should be the first thing in our agenda to benefit it, and I'm not trying to put down your work or the agenda you guys have as a, as a group, as a council, but I know that the first interest should be the city. It's people, the people here in Madera are amazing, they deserve the best. We might not be the biggest city in, in the Central Valley. Sure, we have a lot of competition, like you said, we have to go shop or to another town and invest, you know, I don't know, just different, different needs that we might have to go search outside of Madera, but if we put Madera first, I believe that the Maderans, you know, the people here in Madera will believe in, in the council as well. I just feel like the potential should not be put to the side of what we can be and the way we should be directed to, so, like I said, I know a lot of amazing people here, and it's sad to see that Madera could be much more. And I, we, I have a vision, saying I want Madera to be the best it can be, and I know you guys can do it, if you guys do it for the people and put the city first. Thank you for your time.
Well spoken, well spoken, Mr. Gomez. Thank you very much for those words, I really appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and we will move into the Housing Authority portion, a special meeting of the Madera Housing Authority, and I will pass it over to our new chairman, Chairman Will Oliver.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna begin with Item B1 on the consent calendar. Would any commissioner like to discuss further? If not, I will entertain a motion to act.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Item B1 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicate by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to Item C1. Ms. Shaw?
You asked me at the last meeting last week to turn in scope of services for the three bidders that came in for the Knox site lighting, and I have submitted those to you as well as a brief explanation as to why one of them was non-responsive. I also submitted to you a summary sheet of the bids that came in, so you could see the disparities. So I ask at this point that you approve the contract with Toll Electric for our chairman to sign.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw, and again, thank you for carrying this item over and providing that additional information. Any other questions, Ms. Shaw? If not, I'll entertain a motion for action with Item C1.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Item C1 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Item C1 as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicate by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously, and next we'll move on to Item C2. Ms. Shaw?
Sally Bonprezzi will cover this topic.
Good evening, Mayor and councilpeople. Back in 2007, some of you will remember, we actually did a refinance of the farm labor housing that we have, which includes three complexes. That loan matured on September the 5th of this year, and had some conversations with Wells Fargo. They weren't really interested in refinancing it, so I went out to some of our local banks, and the first one that I went to was Citizens Business Bank, and they were really interested in taking a look at it, and because of the time constraints, we had to do an extension of the Wells Fargo loan, which matures now January 5th, so we're kind of in a time crunch. But I feel that Citizens Business Bank has really given us, we're getting a lower interest rate, the interest rate is gonna be 4.25%, because we're gonna have the payments automatically deducted like we did with Wells Fargo. So the monthly payments are gonna go from $20,426.95 down to $16,674.10, and I'm just asking for approval because, like I said, we're in kind of a time crunch because we need to get the Wells Fargo loan paid off and the new loan. Any questions I can answer at this time?
Great, thank you, Ms. Bonprezzi. Any questions?
Sally, that's a fixed rate?
Yes.
And then, did?
It's amortized over 25 years, and it'll mature again in 10 years.
And how much time do we have left, left on this previous note?
It has matured.
It already matured?
Yes, so the 10 years was up in September.
Okay.
And I just kind of want to keep it local, like I said, I guess there was a little, and going through the file, Wells Fargo Government Department was supposed to have done this loan, and they tossed it over to the Ag Department, and when I talked to the rep, I finally got a hold, we never heard anything. The loan matured, and we never heard anything. Finally got a hold of this Terry from Wells Fargo, and she kind of hem-hawed around and just, they weren't really interested or excited about refinancing it, so we went out and found new financing. And we have gotten approval from USDA because there's a partial release and subordination or consent that they have to give up, because as you understand, even though we own the property, you, we get the subsidy money from USDA, so we have to, so we've already done all that work for that, so I'm just looking for approval tonight.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Bonprezzi. Any other questions, Sally? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Item C2 as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicate by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving forward in the spirit of time, I'm gonna suggest deferring our commissioner reports to our remaining council reports later in the evening, and so with that, the Housing Authority portion will be adjourned.
Thank you very much. We will reconvene now at the regular meeting of the Madera City Council and the special meeting of the Madera Public Financing Authority. Moving on to our consent calendar, is there any council member wishing to further or to pull any particular consent item? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So move to approve.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Item C1, which really is a combined agenda item with C2, this is consideration of a resolution of the Madera City Council, and we will also be discussing as a Madera Public Finance Authority, approving a lease and sublease and an assignment agreement. Mr. Prisbilla.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This council is where we've discussed this a little bit in the past, but we're looking at refinancing two items. One is the golf course debt, and the other one is the police station debt. We were able to lock in a low-interest rate, fixed-interest rate for the golf course, which is good in times of rising interest rates, and we've also been able to realize the savings on the police department debt. There will be two action items tonight, but I'm not gonna present the same report twice. One's for the city, one's for the MPFA, and the action that we'll be requesting is to, for council to adopt the resolution approving a lease, a sublease, and an assignment agreement, and authorizing execution of documents, documents, and the taking of all necessary actions related to these financings. This evening, we have Ken Decker, our municipal advisor from Del Rio Advisors with us, and he has a slideshow presentation that he'll go through and provide more information for council, then we'll be glad to answer any council, any questions council may have.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Prisbilla. Ken Decker with Del Rio Advisors. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Get this, whoop. Slideshow started here. Okay, so basically, California, California public agencies in general are restricted as to the process by which they can borrow money, short of a vote of two-thirds of the electorate. The California, the debt limit in the California Constitution governs how public agencies can borrow money, particularly cities in this case. There are three exceptions that allow you to do this. The first one is the Ofner Dean lease exception. That's essentially leases are not considered debt, because you have to annually appropriate them for, for the lease payments in your budget. So what we're proposing to do here tonight is to refinance two existing leases, where in essence there are leased assets involved leasing between the Public Financing Authority and the city. So in essence, we use a lease-leaseback structure with a third-party entity, generally, in this case, the JPA, the Madera Public Financing Authority. You lease an asset to the Public Financing Authority, you lease it back with payments equivalent to the debt service on the bonds or the obligation. There are some things that you need to know about. First of all, the issuer covenants to appropriate the annual lease payments, it's a promise to pay to the lender or the bondholders. The lease is subject to abatement if you no longer have use and occupancy of the asset. Leases cannot be accelerated in the event of a default situation, and lease payments must equal the fair rental value of the properties involved. They're sometimes called lease revenue bonds or certificates of participation, you may have heard those terms in the past, and again, these are not subject to the constitutional debt limit allowing you to enter into these obligations. The basic concept of structure here, it's a little bit hard to see on the screen, there are some arrows, but I wanted the council to be aware of sort of the basic process where, in this particular case, the documents that you're approving, the lease agreement, is between the city of Madera and the Public Financing Authority, where you lease the asset to the Public Financing Authority, and we're talking about the leased asset in a minute. The sublease is where the city covenants to make budget, budget for the lease payments and lease that back from the authority over time, and the assignment agreement allows the city to make payments, instead of making the payments from the city to the Public Financing Authority and then to a third party assigns the lease payments directly to the lender. That's what the three documents that are up for approval tonight. What we're considering to refinance are the 1993 variable rate demand obligations that were issued for the municipal golf course. There's an outstanding amount, about 1.9 million, that matures on November 1 of 2023. The current interest rate, it is a variable rate, right now, that the estimated rate with letter of credit fees and other things involved with the financing is about 3.17%. Goes up and down every week as the bonds are remarketed. And we're also looking to refinance the police station lease purchase agreement. This was done back in 2005. There's about 847,000 remaining. The final maturity is December 1 of 2025. The leased asset in that situation is the police station, and on the first financing for the municipal golf course, it was originally the golf course was the leased asset, but in 2014, the city replaced that with the city hall. So right now, city hall and the police station are the subject assets of these two financings. The interest rate on the police station is currently at 5.12%. We do have a letter of credit from Union Bank. The bank no longer wishes to renew the letter of credit. The original expiration was November 12 of this year, just last month. We did get them to extend that to January 12 of 2018 in anticipation of being able to refinance this. Part of the problem we're running up against here is the golf course is under private management. Because of that, we're required to refund those bonds for the golf course on a taxable basis. The city hall, like I said, is the current leased asset. The refunding of this does create a slight economic cost for just this particular piece of the financing, but it does lock the interest rate through the end of the term, and the refunding of this would release the city hall asset, because we're proposing a different asset be put in place. The police station lease purchase is strictly for economic savings, the police station is the current leased asset, and the refunding of this would release the asset. In October, I went out to the marketplace and requested proposals from three firms to act as the placement agent. They are in essence the middleman between the bond investor, or in this case, the commercial banks that we approached. We received three proposals, and Hilltop Securities was selected at a fee of $5,000. In November, myself and the placement agent requested proposals from direct placement lenders to refund the 1993 bonds on a taxable basis. We received 10 proposals, so you can feel comfortable that this was a very competitive process. Zion's Bank, California Bank &amp; Trust was the winning bidder. They came in at a 3.19%. That obligation is callable on any date at par, so you can refinance it at some future date, and the interest rate is locked, meaning the interest rate they proposed at the 3.19% is currently fixed for the next 60 days, so that will not change. So we're anticipating closing at that 3.19% rate. The cover bid, or the second-place bid, was BB&amp;T at a 3.22%, and their obligation was non-callable. Also requested, when we determined that the police station refinancing part of this, which is a tax-exempt financing, was going to work, we went back to California Bank &amp; Trust and asked them for a tax-exempt rate on that portion of the financing, and that came in at 2.76%, callable any date at par, and again, the interest rate is locked for the 60-day period, so we don't have to worry about interest rate movements between now and the time we were to close. The net results of all of this, as I said, there is a slight cost, and what I label here on this table as the bonds, that's the golf course refinancing. Overall, there's a total cost over the life of the bonds of 40, almost $41,000, a net-present value cost of about 26,000, 26,700 or 1.41% net-present value cost of refinancing that to a fixed rate. It's really difficult to tell exactly where that would be, that's based on current market rates, but again, that's a variable rate obligation, so if rates were to go up over time, that this analysis would change on the variable rate component. The lease financing is fixed rate, we would get 40, almost $44,500 of total savings, or a net-present value savings of 4.45%. CDAC, which is the California Debt and Investment Advisory Commission, recommends savings in 3% or greater are significant. So this as a standalone refunding of just the police station would make economic sense. The total net-net result is that if we refund the golf course financing on a taxable basis, refund the lease on a tax-exempt basis, there's about $3,600 of total savings, or just under, just about 0.4%. So net-net, this financing, even though we have to refund the golf course bonds on a taxable basis, net-net, because of the police station offsetting that cost, net-net, it's a savings to the city overall, very, very close to essentially break even.
Puts us in a better position, though, that variable, variable versus the fixed, which is the position that we were in prior to.
Absolutely, that is correct, yes. Just to give you some idea, this is what the debt service would look like. It's about, you know, $91,000 for the remainder of this year, this is on a combined basis, this is both pieces of that lease combined, about $474,000 in payments fiscal year 2019 through 2023, and then it drops off a little bit because the golf course portion of the financing matures, and you're just left with the police station component. Again, there's about $3,600 of total savings, about $467 a year, much better than a net cost every year. Individually, the golf course refinancing, based on the 3.19% rate, net-net cost is about $40,000 over the life, or about $7,000 per year, and on the lease side of it, you can see there's about 5,500, looks like $5,688 per year of average annual savings on that, so the net-net of those two added together comes up with a net, net positive benefit to the city. This is the estimated cost of issuance to conclude the financing. Part of the benefit, when we first talked about this with staff, there was a slight cost to the overall financing program, but we were able to get some of the professional fees down to a level that provided us a little bit better economic benefit. So we talked about the essential leased assets per some municipal bankruptcies that occurred over the last several years. The essentiality of the assets is critical to lenders, that's part of the reason why the Union Bank didn't want the golf course as a non-essential asset and would rather have city hall, because you're less likely to walk away from that obligation. And so we are recommending, in this particular case, looking at the list of available essential assets of the city, obviously, fire stations, wastewater treatment plant, police buildings, city hall, and the corporation yard. The corporation yard is the proposed asset, and what this will do is it will free up city hall and the police station admin buildings, should the city decide to borrow some money in the future through the lease structure. So that's our proposed leased asset. The lender has come out and done a site tour of the corporation yard, and I guess that it went very well, and they're very comfortable with it. We are in, right currently, we are in the title process. We did discover that there were a couple of old leases that are no longer outstanding, but they were never taken off the title, and so we're working through the title company to release those two leases, because they have since matured. So basically, the placement, the placement agent and the lender were selected through a very competitive process. Again, Zion's Bank, California Bank &amp; Trust was selected as preferred lender. Interest rates are locked through January 5th, that's our proposed closing date. The bonds that were proposing to enter into are callable anytime at par, meaning you could do a refinancing somewhere down the road, should interest rates allow that again. There's an overall net savings to the city from the entire refinancing program. The corporation yard is proposed lease asset, and like I said, it releases city hall and the police station for future use. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions council might have.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Decker. Obviously, as I mentioned before, this puts us in a better financial position. I think when, as we're looking into the future on those investments, we had to kind of start from the ground up, if you will. So, Tim, I want to appreciate, thank you for your efforts and bringing in Mr. Decker as well, and kind of spelling it out for us over the past few months or so. Any questions about the report, or any questions, Mr. Decker? Doesn't look like it.
Correct.
I'm sorry.
There we go.
Councilmember Gallegos has a question. Wrong button.
Yeah, I'm not feeling well, so I apologize. And just a quick question, what are the two facilities that we took off the? And just a quick question, what are the two facilities that we took off the lease that we're going to take off to release for lease?
One of them was a California Cities Capital Financing Corporation lease that was done in 1990, and that has since been paid off. And the other one was a local lease with opportunity... Mr. Prisbealable.
Yeah. Dave, do you remember the name of that, some opportunity?
Heartland or something like that?
Heartland Opportunity, thank you, Brent. Yeah, and that organization is, they've left, the lease is terminated, they even had some kind of facility there that's been taken down. So those things will be taken off of the title. Just creates a little bit more paperwork for these guys involved, but we're not going to pay them anything extra for that.
Thank you. Glad to get that in, didn't you?
Because he knows that'll be the next question. What's the cost? Any other questions of Mr. Decker? Thank you very much for that presentation. As mentioned before, these are basically one and the same, but we will be acting as a member of the Madera City Council, and the second one would be as a member of the Public Finance Authority. So if there is no further questions or discussions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item C1 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item C1 as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now item C2.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item C2 as presented.
Second. Once again, item C2 has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item D1, this is a request for letter in support of the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority and the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission's Transit and Inter-City Rail Capital Program. Ms. Arata.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Through MCTC, the city received a request to draft a support letter for San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority and the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commissioners Transit and Inter-City Rail Capital Program Grant Application. Staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the attached letter on behalf of the city supporting the San Joaquin Joint Power Authority and the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission, because staff considers that a planning grant to study the positive and negative effects of potentially moving the Amtrak station to provide improved access for an increased number of passengers and improved connectivity with high-speed rail and transit to City of Madera and county is worth studying. If you have additional questions, I'd like to be able to respond.
Thank you, Yvette. Councilman Rodriguez has a question.
Now, Yvette, where is this proposed site that is being, I mean, being proposed here? Is there a site already in mind as far as the relocation goes?
It is to connect with high-speed rail by the Madera Community College, Avenue 12.
Okay, so by the Madera, is it distance from there, a mile, two miles, or how far back are we? Is there a specific site?
Through the study, that would be determined.
Okay.
Isn't that right at where the tracks are? Yeah, I'm sorry, if I can clarify, it would be where the existing tracks are now, so which is, I don't have it in terms of miles or yards, but it is further east of where the college is.
Okay. And the only reason why I bring up that question is because, you know, in the past year, I noticed that this station was relocated, and thank you, David, for answering that question earlier. I think back in 2003, I believe, the station was relocated to its current position there on Avenue 26. And the reason for that was because I think it was maybe remote area, don't know if it was very safe for that matter. So I know that it had some improvements done in 2010. Obviously, in 2015, I think the, if I'm correct here, the HSR, the High Speed Authority, had approved a business plan that allowed for that station to be there because it would be a possible connector dual platform for the high-speed rail. Which at that time, there was a press release, and a lot of county leaders went out there to support it. So my question more so is why this turn of events now? And what is, I mean, the way I look at it is, what benefits does it have being out, especially for the residents of Madera? What benefits does it have being out in another remote area that really doesn't serve the purpose for the residents of the city of Madera? And one of the biggest things that I see is this is a jewel for Madera. It's actually a resource. The fact that it's transportation availability, I mean, we talk about the Bay Area, and we talk about San Jose, Silicon Valley, I mean, the location of where it's now, it's now, it's an ideal location for possibly sprawling development in the future. Our Vision 2025 states that we will continue to build to the north, to the west, in our sphere of influence, and that location is within that sphere of influence. So for me, you have a letter of support to remove a jewel for the city of Madera and possibly have this relocated that could affect, you know, current residents, really kind of, I don't see how this support will benefit the residents of Madera. Although I see the connection between the Madera City Center, I still see that benefiting more areas, kind of like what that letter said, more than Northwest Fresno area and Clovis area. Again, is this something else that we're going to give away to Fresno? I'm afraid of losing development out in that area instead of the city of Madera. And I have to make this statement because years back, before I got into office, I came here to this chambers right here, and I was in support of the alignment that came through the, through the middle of Madera, the alignment that came through Madera that was going to give us mitigation dollars to be able to fix a lot of the, you know, you know, some of the areas in Madera that needed fixing. Obviously, one of the biggest things now is downtown association. Now we're looking to see how we can build this. Well, that was one of the mitigation dollars that we could use. That was one of the proposed areas that would be fixed with the mitigation dollars. Obviously, at that time, it was a different city council, you know, there was support for it. I think it was only one member at the time. But nevertheless, you know, I came here in support of it. Obviously, that didn't happen. I was very discouraged, but, you know, because we didn't know we were going to get a stop. And now that this stop is there, now it's time to get encouraged again because now it's potentially something big that can happen for our community. And I would hate to lose that and give that away to a different sector that's not really representing the city of Madera. Again, maybe in the future, that might be the case, but at this moment, I think that stands there to become something very big for development in the future. And I just don't understand how this came across as a written communication and not some type of consent where we can have some type of, I mean, just have more information, more, some type of analysis to show what makes this a better place for us. And, I mean, I don't want to linger on too much, but that's just the way I feel about this here, and I thought I'd share my comments in regards to the current station now. You know, I just feel that Madera has given up quite a bit in the years passed, and this is something that I'd hate to see go by and not take advantage of it.
All very valid points, Mayor Protem, and very valid concerns. I'm not sure if it was a question in there, or maybe just kind of making a statement, which, as I said...
Both the question and my comments, of course, because it's very dear to me, obviously.
Of course.
More importantly is, I mean, again, I think the question that I would ask is, what benefit does it serve the residents of Madera to move this out there? And that would be more of a valid question.
That is to be determined. The intent of the letter of support is to assist these entities in their grant application, which would further the analysis on the benefits that it would bring for the city, the county, the region.
And the reason why I bring that up is because not too long ago, we had someone from Reedley College come out here and kind of give us the attendance of the students that attend the Madera Center. And I was kind of shocked to see that not a lot of people from Madera South are attending due to lack of transportation. So again, if it's due to lack of transportation, moving this out, would that be more of a burden to some residents in Madera, or would it be a benefit? So if students aren't attending college because of transportation, then, you know, I just don't know how this is going to play out, and I don't know if it's going to be in the favor of the residents of Madera. I can see how it's going to benefit developments out in those areas out there, especially in the 12th and 41 corridor, but here in the city of Madera, I'd hate to lose, I'd hate to lose a jewel like that. And that's why I think I share those comments and I ask those questions, so.
As I mentioned before, very valid points, very good questions. I do want to introduce Dylan Stone from Madera County Transportation Commission, who may have a little more insight. I do know that there's a lot of questions here by my colleagues, as well as there's, I think, a number of people in the audience that have called me personally about this issue, so we need to dive right in and get, ask as many questions as we can. And, Mr. Stone, if you can maybe help shed some light on Mayor Protem's question and the SJJPA and kind of how they arrived at where we are right now.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. Those are some good questions you have, and there's a couple of them I want to address just right now off the bat. When we look at this, the current Amtrak station, the proposed site next to the Madera Community College, since it's a public transit thing, I generally look at the intermodal center as our center for public transit because it connects all of our local fixed route systems and our dialeride system as well as station there right now. It's the center of town. This would be about 0.6 miles further from that center, the intermodal center, going the Avenue 12 direction and not 26, as it currently stands. You are correct, the new location, like the existing location, is not within the Madera city limits, it's within the Madera sphere of influence. Additionally, that south area is part of a future growth area as well. How we arrived where we are today is in 2016, the High-Speed Rail Authority inserted into their business plan, an intention to link the national Amtrak system with the proposed statewide high-speed rail system in Madera County. So that's a unique connection that no one else in the state is going to see happen until, you know, it reaches LA or some, you know, one of the large metros. We initially, right when that happened, we looked at the site, we looked at the plan, and we started meeting and collaborating with our local partners and our regional friends at the San Joaquin Rail Authority, or San Joaquin Joint Power Authority, and then San Joaquin Rail Committee, and really put our heads together to think, what's the best course of action that makes the most sense for the most efficient investment for that kind of connection? And we look at that area north where the existing station, and it is nice and it is moved due to safety concerns from the old station. However, it is currently outside of the core area. It's right on the periphery of the town, on the edge. It's not currently served by a quality fixed route transit system. What you asked before, how does this benefit Madera? Well, this new location is currently served by hourly fixed route transit that can get people there to every single train that comes and leaves, where the existing train, you have to make appointment through dialeride. So that's more cumbersome as far as connecting people here in Madera to that system efficiently. Avenue 12 is one of the main east-west connectors from the city of Madera to Highway 41 and people who access destinations in that direction, and vice versa. It's more accessible in a transportation sense to people, not just in the city, but the region, really. This is a statewide system that's going to connect to a national system. We're drawing people from eastern Madera County, as well as Chowchilla and the city. This is something that is, not only for the city, really, this has potential to help the city and the rest of our county residents access that more efficiently due to the existing infrastructure and ease of access to reach the new site. Within the college's master plan, it's actually the exact location they do call for a future transit hub to connect the region to their campus. There's a lot of good things going on with this site. It's not leaving Madera, it's still within the sphere of influence. It doesn't necessarily benefit Fresno or Clovis, other than the fact that they can come to us for a more efficient access to these systems to reach the state capital, which is a big part of what this grant is about. It's increasing access to the San Joaquin Valley to important destinations in the state capital and along the route of the San Joaquin system itself. The nature of residential development in the current area would mean more impact if they were to build that type of connecting station to that area. That means more acquisition of land parcels that are out there that is above and beyond what has already happened in that area. There's one property owner in the area we're talking about right now. That was also something we considered. We've been working on this since, I believe, August 2016, getting our heads together on what makes sense, and we have a great asset in Dan Levitt and his staff at the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority. We've really had more involvement and investment with Madera and the Amtrak system that's in our county since we began working with them several years ago. And really, the application they're going for is testament to that. They're trying to bring more dollars and more work back here into our county for this project. We would recommend that you do support the letter, as we have at the MCTC board. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions, if there's something I haven't covered.
In all fairness, the next person to ask was Councilwoman Gallegos, so she has a question.
I have several. The first one is, when we moved the station from the original place to, on 26, who paid for that?
Caltrans was involved a lot in that, the movement 11 years ago, I believe, or it was a while ago.
2003?
Yes.
Caltrans fronted the bill?
They were heavily involved. I wasn't working with MCTC back then, not totally up to speed on all components, but I do know that it was through Caltrans planning and their Division of Rail that a lot of the work that happened for that movement happened.
And you mentioned that it would benefit our city because there's a lot of development out there. I don't know if you're aware that we have infrastructure that would have to be put in and costs millions of dollars to develop parcels out there in that area. And the city would have to front that money, which I don't think we have that right now. And I know we're looking towards the future. For my concern, as a councilperson, as for my residents, is we're building a Love's Truck Center, Travel Center, towards where the Amtrak station is now. We have the new high school going there. We have a casino that's going to be built there. A Catholic church has purchased 20 acres out there. For our residents, I don't know if it's the best thing to move it to the other side of town when all our growth is going this way. Who's going to purchase the land for this new station?
That is yet to be determined.
Would it be just county?
This would be the first preliminary stages to making this concept.
I'm just concerned because development's not going to happen on 12 for a while, until something is done, unless developer are willing to put in the infrastructure, which will cost millions of dollars to our city. And I just personally feel that we're moving this way as a city, and this would be the best thing for our residents to keep it where it's at. And that was just my take on it.
Thank you for that input. Councilman Hawley.
Yes. You know, I've been around Madera a long time, and I watched this when we took this Amtrak off of 15. We didn't know where we were going with it, but we found a spot, and I think the spot that it was at was real bad. Now to put something in place that's nice, and to take it out of that spot, to move it out to a location that's farther out of town, I mean, we're looking at, it was hard to get where it's at, but we're in the city limits, which is cities going that way. But to take it and put it out there on 12, past the College Center, that's way out of our, you know, it's going to cost us more to get our residents there than it is to move the station. This is a beautiful station, it's a nice stopping place. Plus, we're looking at what's going that direction. We have a brand-new high school that's developing, and the main thing, I feel that they're going that direction because now they have transportation. But to take that transportation that's going to be used to move it way out of the way, we're defeating our purpose. I can't, the high-speed rail is something of a miss to me anyway, but to move Amtrak right now is way beyond, and I know this is just a money thing to get somebody to say it's going to work. Nobody knows it's going to work. They don't know if the train going to run. But yet, we're taking our time to put a grant in for something to be moved that we desperately need in that location. I don't see it. I mean, I studied it, I've had people call me, I've talked to counterparts here, and being here as long as I have, I feel that we're defeating Madera's purpose to join these two together. If they're separated, leave them separated, because we was trying to get a maintenance yard, they took that away from us. I don't know what they're going to take away next. So I have really lost my ambition to try to join these two together. I love where it's at, it's convenient, people ain't got used to it, it's on the map. Now we finna take this and move it because we can get dollars. Dollars not helping our city. If it was coming into the city, it's going to help, and I can see a progress being made. But we finna put a brand-new high school out there, and that's going to put a lot of people in that area. They're going to need transportation from that point. So I haven't seen this where it's going to benefit us yet. So until somebody can show me what's finna happen, I'm negative on it.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman Hawley. I am going to get to the public as well, but there's a few more questions by my colleagues, starting with Councilman Oliver.
First, Dylan, can you elaborate, based on what you know as far as the eighth daily round? based on what you know as far as the eighth daily round trip that Amtrak or the San Joaquin Valley Rail JPA is looking to explore? Because that's really the backdrop of the statewide grant application.
That is part of it. It's part of this application that they're doing on our behalf. It's part of a bigger application, really. Part of it is that currently, Amtrak runs seven times a day, starting at its terminus on both ends. And they're going to look to add a new train and a new route to eight trips per day on the San Joaquin Amtrak system. They're actually looking at a lot of stations along the San Joaquin Valley system and ways they can improve and what would be the most efficient to help capture more riders for this increased level of service that they're providing in the valley. They're also looking at starting in the mid, they call it a mid-run start, which they will start in Fresno instead of at Bakersfield and Sacramento. So we'll be able to access areas earlier for people that do commute for work to other regions within the state along the San Joaquin corridor line. So when this new business plan came into it, it immediately became a focus of the SJJPA group to make sure that the plan they do want to do is the most efficient and has the best ability to provide the best benefit for the nature of what that system is, which is a statewide and regional system.
Yeah, so, you know, I just wanted to share a few comments. I think that my colleagues, Mayor Protem Rodriguez and Councilmember Foy Gallegos and Councilmember Holly have raised some really good points. I want to share partially my perspective on the sitting on the Madera County Transportation Commission, some of the discussions that we've had early on with Mr. Levitt. And let me just start by first saying, I agree with you 100% on the, as far as the alignment. That was a discussion between the A2 and the A1 alignment. And at the time, with a different city council, we decided for high-speed rail to go around us, thinking it probably not even happened. But what we missed out on was those critical infrastructure investments that come with a consequential project of that size. And whether you think it's going to happen or not, you can look to the city of Fresno, who is receiving $500 million in road and transportation improvements. That does not include the construction of the high-speed rail alignment in line. That's overpasses, underpasses, grade separations, utility relocations, and getting those codes to conform to their general plan standards, which are long-term documents. And we missed out on that opportunity. And I see it every day, driving through Cleveland Avenue and the bottleneck and the mess that it is because they would have likely corrected that and treated that. But we cannot go back seven or eight years when those alignments were debated and discussed. So pivoting back to the discussion regarding the Amtrak, I did participate in that press conference to, you know, extend our support behind co-locating a high-speed rail station or platform with our Amtrak station. I don't care where you put it. I support that hands down. Whether you think it's going to happen or it's not, I'm absolutely in favor of that. I think we have to be steadfast in that support. However, during that process, what I wasn't in favor of was the High Speed Rail Authority not willing to invest in actual planning, actual design, actual scrutiny over whether or not that was a good decision. They did not put forth that scrutiny or evaluation. They did not look at that through the lens of a full-blown EIR. They incorporated it in their 2016 business plan, as Councilmember Rodriguez has alluded to. And they picked a point on the map because that's where Amtrak was, and they needed to connect to the Amtrak system. Because part of their charge with Prop 1A, when it was approved in 2008, was to allow for multimodal opportunity and to connect the state and all of its regions with the central valley serving as that backbone. So we were there, supporting that. Mr. Levitt engaged us, in large part, with the plans for the eighth daily round trip to expand their service, to expand times for residents, whether they're, you know, loading a train from Madera and having to go to work down in, you know, South Valley or head up north to Merced or Sacramento, so they could do so reasonably, which is something I think we should all support and get behind no matter what. And, but with that discussion, he had, he was very curt and very frank to say the current location where Amtrak is was built to serve the way it is currently, not to accommodate a future high-speed rail platform or stop. And by the way, high-speed rail is indicating that it's going to be a temporary deal. And you guys got to get on board to ask and be adamant for a permanent stop or location. And so we felt that MCTC was prudent to take a look at that, to dive into that. I know that in the staff report, it references properties and things like that. We all know that there's going to have to be a full-blown evaluation and site selection and environmental review before determining what's, you know, feasible and what's not. There's a whole host of mitigation factors that have to be taken into consideration, which, by the way, weren't taken into consideration when choosing the current Amtrak location when high-speed rail made that decision. And you can ask the residents out there if that happened as well. So we looked at those many different factors. I know, speaking with Mr. Levitt, the reason why 12, between 12 and 13 was expressed is because it's an area of the, both of the alignments where it tapers. And you can actually have a cross-platform type stop and station that's situated to move passengers to and from each alignment. You cannot do that at the current Amtrak station. And by the way, the right-of-way plans weren't designed to accommodate that co-located station. Those were done 2012, 2013, 2014. This decision was made in the 2016 business plan. So obviously, there's going to be a lot of questions regarding site selection, regarding where's the best place, whether it's 12. We thought, you know, yes, it makes sense. The part of the decision to locate the Madera Center, Madera Community College, rather than off of Highway 41 or towards northeast Fresno, was with the plans that the city would grow and develop out that way. I've had extensive dialogue and conversations with Ron Menfretti about that subject. We have a college master plan that would accommodate that growth, and it has been stagnant, in large part because we haven't been able to work with the folks across the street at the county. And so that's our fault. But what we do know is that there is development that's occurring in the southeast corridor. There, we've approved some of our latest subdivisions that we've seen go online in recent years. It's towards the southeast. We've approved a southeast master plan with prospective home builders out that way. We filed annexation applications for Parksdale. And we've extended police services to Parkwood with the anticipation in future years that we will probably be moving that way and incorporating that area. So it was with that future lens to think, yes, Madera Junior College, which, after hearing our presentation from Reedley College, is something that we should value and something that we should champion, and something that we should look at as an economic development tool. And if we can jointly work with state agencies who are looking to invest in projects that promote multimodal activity, that allow for people to move to and from, both in their cities and while connecting to the rest of the state, to invest in areas that can be planned responsibly and to do it with the education, a premier educational facility there nearby, it checked all those boxes. But I agree. I don't think we're neither here nor there. I think this is a letter of support to apply for a statewide grant application to study this. I think that's paramount. I think that we should, we all should be writing letters to the High Speed Rail Authority to say, give us the planning dollars or stationary and master plan dollars that you've afforded to Fresno, to Hanford, to Gilroy, to Bakersfield, which you haven't here. So I think, to me, that's part of our discussion at MCTC. I fault myself if, you know, I haven't gone out of my way to this board to share some of those updates from those meetings. But I think it's a preliminary discussion, but I think it's a forward-thinking discussion. I think we have to drill down to those details as far as our land use plan, as far as our growth patterns, as far as where infrastructure is. But I think part of it is, instead of letting high-speed rail go around us and pay for those past mistakes to the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars, rather than let San Joaquin Valley Rail JPA move forward with their project, with us not at the table because they're going to promote whatever they think will allow them to expand their facilities and expand their service, I think we should be at that table. So I think my colleagues have made some fair points. I might offer a suggestion that, you know, we maybe table this discussion, bring it back for a workshop with Mr. Levitt with the San Joaquin Valley Rail JPA to discuss their plans, their business plan, and provide a lot more of that information. And I think that would be prudent to the discussion.
We would be willing to facilitate that. And Dan Levitt is a tremendous asset, not just to Madera and our county and the valley. He's done a lot of good work for us in representing the valley and the Amtrak system. And it is, like you said, you know, our ability to answer your questions, we need to do the due diligence in this grant. If we're awarded it, allows us to do that due diligence to answer those questions. Is this a benefit?
Absolutely.
And we're not footing the bill for that if we are awarded that grant.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, on that update, which really has been an ongoing discussion, as you had said, since the summer of 2016. And in speaking with some people today, they were completely unaware of kind of where we are. And so, yeah, I believe we have a responsibility at MCTC to share that, not only with our colleagues here on the dais, but with our constituents in our community as well, to include them on matters such as this. But I think we're getting there to where we can continue to have that discussion. But I know Councilman Rodriguez has another question.
Yes, Dylan, thank you. And Councilman Oliver, thank you so much for the detailed explanation. I appreciate that. I think it would be prudent for us to get more information. I think this item on the agenda kind of took me by surprise based on the language that was presented on the staff report. And I think that we could have done a better job by at least giving us some type of workshop for this that's coming up. Obviously, you guys are privileged to have some information that we don't. So I think that would be prudent for us to get that workshop. Also, now, you mentioned something about the best possible location for these agencies. Now, is that not something that can be mitigated with this current station? Is that not something that we can?
Can I say that's possible? What we look at is not just the current Amtrak station, but when high-speed rail says they want to build a station, they have specific station designs that they select in all their communities that they are putting stations in. Quite frankly, they contradict everything they preach when they say they want to put a station in a location that's built like that.
Well, and the reason why I say this is because there's been so many modifications with this whole high-speed rail.
Right.
And, you know, basically, this city wants it here. The city wants this. We want mitigation dollars for this and that. So why not put up a fight? Why not try to do something that's going to spur development in that area? I mean, is that something that you're saying that will not be done because the high-speed rail says it's not the best area for its location or for its purpose?
I'm not saying that. And I'm not, definitely not speaking for high-speed rail. I don't know who can. But just based off our preliminary discussions and using the knowledge we do have in this field, there are benefits, construction design-wise, for the location we have looked at thus far. And there are barriers, as have just been mentioned by Councilmember Oliver.
Yeah, and again, I know this is just a request for a letter of support. But again, you know, I'm not willing to support something that frankly, I don't have the information. And I don't think that residents of Madera at least need to know that there's some out there, some type of economic boost that could potentially bolster. And that's what was released on that press release, that this is a big bolster. Now, whether it was in that location or not, that's what I thought it was. And that's why I thought this was encouraging to hear that we had another opportunity at the high-speed rail. And having that opportunity to have transportation come into the sector of the community is an injection of economic growth. And that's where I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it in that perspective, you know. And I appreciate the detailed explanation that my colleague here provided. But I also have to look out for the best interest in Madera, in the city of Madera. Not the future where the boundaries lie because obviously, we can be going up to 12 and 41 at some point or another. Right now, I'm looking at what's in the best interest of the boundaries within our city and our sphere of influence. And I know that both of those areas are in the sphere of influence. But I don't see, I see a big ticket to get to that area. And I just want to know if we were able to amend something, where modify something to some point where this might be a better location. Is that possible? Is that something that people can fight for? And again, not trying to derail your, the proposition that you have here. I just want to ask the question. Can we propose something different to the high-speed rail? And if so, why not try to champion that for the citizens of Madera?
I believe it is possible to examine, you know, existing or proposed alternatives and, you know, juxtapose the positives or negatives of either. That would be prudent.
Yeah, and Dylan, it's just, I'm not willing just to see something like this go by this quickly. I think, like I've mentioned before, when we saw that A1 alignment disappear, very discouraging. I want to make sure that I have all the information possible to make a really good, informed decision of what's going to take place and how that's going to benefit or affect our residents here in Madera. So I know this is just a letter of support, but I don't think I'm ready right now to support anything that I don't quite feel that I have enough information to do that.
I think, as mentioned before, Mr. Stone, I think it would be very prudent to have Mr. Levitt possibly come here and give a workshop or at least a Q and A. I know we reached out to a member of the board, our representative in Brett Fraser. He was unable to be here this evening as well. I'm sure he will want to attend the next meeting. So if you can, Mr. Stone, reach out to Dan and see how quickly he can be here for that discussion. And I think with the questions and concerns that were brought up, I think we can move forward and get to a place where we're comfortable.
Okay. We might be able to arrange something. I believe these grant applications will be due before your next scheduled meeting. So we might have to figure out what is legal or appropriate as far as meeting to discuss that.
I'm sure he would understand completely.
Definitely.
And as I mentioned before, in all fairness, I know there's a few people here that would like to possibly take the microphone like to possibly take the microphone and share some thoughts that we have on this. I'll open it up to anybody who would like to come forward and share anything that they have regarding this particular item.
I can have a pen.
Okay, I'm going to have her come up here to the microphone. And just like before, I need you to come to the microphone and give us your name and address. And so you'll be next.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Gail McIntyre, 1234 De Chesere Avenue, Madera. I'm really not here to harangue the council, but I would like to point out that I think your agenda item was a little misleading. Because the letter that is in your packet says a key area of interest related to this grant application is the relocation of the Madera Amtrak station. That has never been discussed here or with this community. Now, the reason that there is an interest in moving it out of this community to Avenue 12 is because the people in that area know that it's an economic driver. Property values increase around the station. Businesses develop around the station and jobs are created. Good Lord knows that the city of Madera needs that. The more you push things south, the more things go to Fresno. Your own letter says this is a great regional location for Fresno and Clovis. What about Madera, Chowchilla? Every regional discussion that we have, and I know from experience of 18 years, the city of Madera is short-changed in that discussion. We are shafted by regional politics. So if you really are supportive of this city, then you need to fight to keep that station right where it is. And I agree with you 100 percent, Councilman Oliver. We can't lose on the HSR economic possibilities anymore. When I say lose, I mean the city of Madera. That's who you should be looking to helping here.
Absolutely.
Not pushing this thing outside of town toward Fresno. So thank you.
Thank you, Gail. She covered it?
No, no.
Okay. Great, thanks. Thank you.
I wanted to mention something about that. The letter itself doesn't say positive. It says it has the ability to draw riders that would go to Fresno in lieu of the North Madera location. I don't necessarily think Clovis or Fresno would think that's a positive for them.
Right.
It's about, they would capture draw, the same way it would capture draw Eastern Madera County potentially.
I think it might have been just-
Due to the ease of access and facilities on the ground.
I can't speak for them in their intent, but I think they were just trying to show that obviously, it's in Madera County, so it's the surrounding areas that we draw.
If that's worded incorrectly, I apologize, but it's about an ability to draw, not necessarily to benefit someone else. They don't benefit if people are coming to buy their ticket in the Madera's influence.
Exactly. Councilwoman Gallegos.
I'd just like to chime in on Mrs. McIntyre's comment about asking our community what they think. I'm not sure if anybody else knows, but I have a daughter in Cal Poly, and we are in Amtrak every other month. And we have at least six to eight children, or young people, getting off Amtrak, coming to Madera from Cal Poly. Constantly, at least, I've done it for two years now. And I'll tell you this, I asked a couple of the parents if the station was to be relocated to 12. They're like, we might as well pick our kids up in Fresno. We're almost there.
Yep.
So that was a concern to me as a parent of a child who's constantly using Amtrak right now, and a lot of other students that are on that train that get off and on constantly, that if it was way out there, we might as well go to Fresno. Because we're running errands, have them just have their tickets go to Fresno. So by leaving it here, we're picking up our kids here, we're having dinner with them here, we're doing things with them here, and not doing that with them in Fresno. So I'm thanking Mrs. McIntyre for bringing up, asking our community maybe what they would like.
Anyone else, please come forward. We'll get to everybody, I promise.
Hello, I'm Eddie Block, 916 East Cleveland. You all know me well. I was actually president of student government at Reedley College when we needed to get the people to come out there with the transit. And they're still not really using it as much as it should be. And I don't think we should move it out there. I do think all that's going to do is send people to Fresno. As you all know, I'm very pro-Madera, and I'm tired of everybody shopping outside of Madera. So by making people drive halfway there, they're going to just drive the rest of the halfway, as Ms. Gallegos said, to Fresno. And when they mentioned it's going to bring jobs, we all know these construction workers are not from Madera. They are all driven in, paid for their hotel rooms. So, yeah, we get some hotel money, but that's not job money. We need to get the jobs here and our local companies, so I don't think we should move it.
Thank you, Mr. Block. Thank you for your input. Please come forward.
My name is April Molina. I'm about a block outside the city limits. And, Mr. Oliver, I can tell you that I can see the high-speed rail from my house, so it's not that far outside of Madera. All that, just to say, I'm not anybody in particular, I'm a consumer. My husband works in Fresno, so we go to Fresno a lot. I have lived in Madera for 37 years. I'm 40 years old, so since I was three years old. And I have seen Madera overshadowed by Fresno more times than any other city in this area. I mean, more than Merced, more than, you know, we have to consider the North Valley, too, also, that are coming in Chowchilla. The very next item on your agenda is the intergovernmental corroboration between everybody. So I think we need to consider Chowchilla, that's actually in Madera County, before we consider the people in Clovis and Fresno coming to commute. I don't think that leaving the station where it is is going to hurt anybody's feelings in Fresno. They have their own Amtrak station. And so when you look at the location of where it is right now, there are several ways to get to Road 26. You can pull people in from Yosemite Tozer Bridge. You can pull people in from the Cleveland area. You can pull people in from Ellis Street, right there where Home Depot Shopping Center is. And you, every single place that you are looking at, you are passing by a shopping center. There's Rancho San Miguel, right there on Yosemite Corner. There's Lowe's and Walmart shopping area, right there on 99. Love's is getting put in. Pilot Truck Stop is right on the other side. So I think leaving it on 26 is the best option for the city of Madera. It will entice more businesses to come to Madera. We need something in Madera that is close enough to the city. And I'm sorry, I realize you said it's .6 miles outside of Madera, but it takes 10 minutes just to get to Avenue 12. And I don't like Avenue 12. I always take 15 to Fresno anyways. So I will never see the station. But I just, I voted against the high-speed rail because I hated it. I actually chewed out my brother for canceling out my vote. The intergovernmental meeting back in September was the first time since it was passed that I saw the high-speed rail as a good thing for Madera. And I'd like to continue to see it as a good thing. And when it was mentioned that it would be placed out there on 26, I thought, what a great way to bring in Amtrak also. Because you don't want to see Amtrak fail. And so I would say, as a resident, as a consumer, as somebody who loves the city of Madera as much as I do, leave it where it is.
Thank you, April. Thank you for your input.
Mayor Madellin, Members of the Council, Al Galvez. I'm a resident of the Country Club. And probably why I received many, many calls today in Texas is because I'm a candidate for District 2 Board of Supervisor. And I had a lot of calls inquiring about this situation and something I was not aware of. And I looked up the city council's agenda, and it threw me off because it really didn't get into specifics. So I went and got the staff report. And so I just have a couple of comments, and I'm glad that Mayor Pro team, Jose Rodriguez, has about some good points. And I think, you know, moving forward to having a workshop is going to be beneficial for everybody. But I was trying to wrap my arms around this staff report, and I was kind of lost because it talks about that you have collaborated with regional and local partners. And I would like to know who those local partners are. I spoke to the city of Chowchilla, and they were not aware that this was happening. They were aware that this was a discussion, but not aware that this was happening. And so they proceeded to let me know that they would like me to speak on their behalf, that this is not what they want. Second of all is, how do you see a benefit to the city of Madera out on 12? Right now, where it exists, people get off the train, they either want to rent a car if they want Yosemite, they're going to buy gas, they're going to go to the restaurants and get food here, go to the grocery stores, if they're going to Yosemite, because that's what the report says, that they're going that way. If they get off on 12, they're never going to come to the city of Madera. There is no benefit tax-wise or benefit for the city. I don't, that's what I don't understand. Why is the city of Madera trying to push it out to 12 where it doesn't impact you? Moving it away from where it's at on 26 has an impact, a financial impact, for the businesses in the city of Madera. They don't stop, they're not going to stop here. Why? They're not going to come back here to fill up with gas and buy groceries and go to Yosemite. They're not going to do that. They're going to stop at the ranchos. And so I'm glad there's going to be a workshop. I'm sure there'll be more comments. I'm sure that my constituents who are opposed to this will call me and give me more background. But I just want to go on the record to say that the folks that called me are not happy and the city of Chowchilla is not aware this is happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Galvez. And full disclosure, Alan, I had a long conversation today about this. I want to appreciate you giving me a call and reaching out, and I'm glad you're here this evening. I expect nothing less. Anyone else wishing to speak on this particular item?
Councilmembers, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I won't belabor the subject, but all the speakers here reflect my views. And I'll veer off a little bit, take off my businessman hat. I look forward to the workshop. I think that's really important, that we look at the business dynamic of where that location is. But let me put on my trustee hat. I'm a member of the Madera Unified School Board of Trustees. We are currently operating seven schools out there, and we're going to build an eighth. We have 7,700 kids programmed out there. They're all full. Pershing's beyond its capacity, Monroe's beyond its capacity, Inishimota's beyond its capacity, and so is Desmond. When we open up our new comprehensive high school, just minutes south of this existing station, it will be full. There's a lot of robust growth in that area, and all through Madera. When we look in our 12-year facilities plan and beyond, we're not looking down at Avenue 12. We don't anticipate any kind of growth there for at least 20 years. The infrastructure challenges there are what stopped growth that should have taken place 20 years ago when the Community College Center was first located there. But here, we have huge investment from the city as well, on the north side, in major sewer interceptors that will much more efficiently and cost-effectively serve 20,000 to 30,000 new residents with very little new investment from the city. Your growth areas, your urban growth areas are surrounding the existing station, and there is an opportunity to get some relief from high-speed rail. The county has forfeit their opportunity to weigh in, but because this is part of your general plan, and you surround the station with your growth areas, you can ask for mitigation and should get it. Because the dual-platform station out there is going to be such a strong economic driver. I ask you to look at the DeRidon Station in San Jose. 30 years ago, it was just a thought. They started planning, they put in a light rail station there. Now, the Altamont Corridor Express is going to go to the DeRidon Station, Caltrain, BART, high-speed rail. Google is planning 8 million square feet of improvements in the DeRidon Station for housing, commercial, and their office space. The median price of an acre there is $5 million. Now, I mention that because we're already overcrowded, and we haven't finished our high school, we haven't started the new high school. But we need bigger, we need more tax base. That's going to come from our existing core. It won't come from the Avenue 12 corridor. We need to improve our tax base. We need to bring people in who have disposable income and can buy houses here. By the same token, our kids will have the ability to move out. I mean, it's a very robust system that's being proposed. Madera has a huge role to play in it, at the southern triangle from the Altamont Corridor Express, which is part of the Northern California Unified Service, and high-speed rail. It is so huge for us, and we can't lose it. We have to keep that station where it is right now. It'll benefit everybody, but it'll benefit the city of Madera more than anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this particular item, please come forward. Thank you very, very much for your input. And to be very honest, this is the most public comment we've had from the very beginning in public comment to now. And I really mean it when I say that I would hope that our chambers are always this full because it's hearing from the public and hearing from you that really helps us in decisions that we make. Better now, as we can continue and have workshops and have discussions to get to where we want to be and move forward and make that change and have the best interest of the community in mind, it's these discussions. And so honestly, I really appreciate that you come down here and you give us your input so that we can continue to work together and have that potential, as that was mentioned earlier, for Madera to move forward. Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Madellin. Now, Dylan, I did have a question for you because you did bring up a time-sensitive matter.
Yes.
So is this something that needs to be done here quickly in a short time period? And how soon before something like this, this application has to be turned in?
The application will be submitted, I believe, in three weeks.
So that gives us three weeks to try to arrange something, right? Now, at the end of the day, if the council decides not to support, I mean, not necessarily support that other portion, but necessarily just the station, relocation of the station, how then would that look? And how would we, was that be a recommendation to our staff to maybe?
I think that would play a big factor in analyzing how appropriate it is for any station other than the existing, definitely.
Okay. And just want to make sure that if that's the case, and I don't know what the council's decision will be, but then, at that time, I guess, if there, for, you know, obviously for what we've, the information that we received today, if council decides that this is not something that we want to move forward, I guess, we turn to staff then, and you'd have to modify that letter or something in support, excluding that relocation station?
I think we could definitely work to rewrite the letter of support to remove a reference to a specific station area or even to relocation of the station and make it support of the grant to analyze the additional trips that are the heart of the proposal.
Well, I just, and again, I just think it's prudent that we get that workshop as soon as possible because I think, like you said, if it's time-sensitive, we want to make sure that we make any amendments if needed, move forward.
Definitely.
Great point. Thank you very much. Councilman Oliver. I have about 10 more questions. No, I'm joking. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that engaged on this topic and shared their points of view. I thought the discussion was really good, and I think that you all made excellent points. And I want you to know, too, at least to my participation on the Madera County Transportation Commission, front and center is the best interest of the city. And not only of today, but where we're going as well. And so honestly, I could care less where it goes. I think Amtrak, high-speed rail, co-located station is the best thing for us. And I think what should be central to that is how we can leverage those public investments and see that it's in the best, you know, position that it can be for the future. So, but I want to thank everyone for engaging on this topic. I thought it was good. Great point. So I think with that, if there's nothing else, I think we have direction in contacting Mr. Levitt and seeing how soon he can be here for that particular workshop. We'll make sure that as soon as the agenda item comes out, that it's posted right away. But I think it's incumbent upon us as electors to reach out to you folks that have been here today to let you know when that date and time will be so that you can be here and continue with that input.
I'll work with you to coordinate that.
Great. Thank you both so very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I really appreciate that input. That was great that a number of people were here. Moving on to item E1, this is consideration of a resolution approving a cooperative agreement with the county of Madera and the city of Chowchilla to facilitate intergovernmental collaboration.
Mayor, Members of the Council, as stated in the title, this document is a result of the intergovernmental joint meeting held in September between the County Board of Supervisors and the City Councils of Madera and Chowchilla. At that time, some key areas were identified on where the agencies could focus their efforts as far as county-wide benefit. The Steering Committee met. Steering Committee representatives for the city of Madera were the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Gallegos was Mayor Pro Tem at the time, so she attended the first meeting. In your packet is a document that was drafted and reviewed by the Steering Committee. The collaborative agreement has already been approved by the County Board of Supervisors and the city of Chowchilla. So we would ask consideration for approval of that document. And then I would defer to the mayor and Councilmember Gallegos on any other information they'd like to provide regarding that.
Thank you very much, Sonia. And yes, I don't have to rehash the meeting that we had with the city of Chowchilla and the county of Madera. I think the baseline for that was the three entities coming together for the betterment of Madera County. And those topics or discussions that we could all work together with and use our resources and collaborate and cooperate, again, to move the entire county forward. And so as Ms. Molina had pointed out, we need to sit down with Chowchilla in a number of areas. And the same thing as Councilman Oliver had pointed out earlier, there may have been some missed opportunities in the past, basically because there was no relationship. But we're here now, and we're here today, and I think we're putting our best foot forward in recognizing some of those issues that really affect all of us as an entire county. And in the report, it shows the top four that we came up with from that September meeting that shows the challenges in emergency medical services countywide. It also shows us addressing and reducing homelessness, which we would all agree is a very big issue. And again, thank you to Ms. Molina for always bringing her points of view to those meetings. Again, it's about working together, so I really appreciate it. Also, the economic efforts. So as we talk about relocation of a rail facility, or we talk about the 99 corridor, whether we are widening 99 and the benefits that we could share with a different city, albeit but at the same time, we're all Madera County. So I think that was heavily discussed. And of course, the ongoing issue collaborating on water resource projects. And so the Steering Committee, when we met not long ago, we knew that we were going to put different ad hoc committees together within our own boards. And so I want to thank then-Mayor Pro Tem, Gallegos, for sitting in on that and assisting in getting us to this point. And so now, the representation will be myself or the mayor of not only Madera, but the mayor of Chowchilla in representation from the county, our new Mayor Pro Tem, Jose Rodriguez, in assigning tasks, if you will, to the council members in addressing these challenges that have really impacted the county of Madera. So we will continue to have updates. We will continue to show in steps on where we are. And definitely, we will continue to reach out to the community and ask for assistance and help and guidance and direction. And again, I hope that these chambers will be just as full with that particular type of input. So. of input. Councilperson Gallegos, anything to add to that?
I said it all.
Save your voice. Save your voice. So, with that, we are just looking to, like the county did, is adopt the resolution as before us accepting those guidelines.
Correct.
Any other questions or concerns from my colleagues?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt item E1 as presented.
Second? It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item E1 as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Moving on to item E2, this is discussion and appointment of an interim city administrator and appointment of an ad hoc committee to negotiate terms of said agreement.
Yes, Mayor, with the retirement and departure of the former city administrator, obviously, the task now before him is to appoint an interim to act in that capacity until such time as a permanent recruitment is done. The item is actually, it indicates appointment of an interim. You don't necessarily have to take any action tonight if you don't want to. Should you appoint an interim, though, you would need to appoint an ad hoc committee to deal with terms and conditions of that appointment and bring back, obviously, an agreement to that effect at a future meeting. So, with that, it's kind of, I'll just throw it in your direction and see what your preference is. It could be, the other thing to add is it could be somebody from within the organization or somebody from outside the organization. If it is somebody outside the organization, that will entail additional steps such as background checks, et cetera, that are typically undertaken by HR.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. And I think it's incumbent upon us as a council and for us to move forward this evening. Obviously, there's been some uncertainty and a lot of negative press over the recent retirement of our city manager, Mr. Thule. And let me first start by thanking our staff and all of our employees of the City of Madera for continuing to forge ahead and to provide that excellent service to the City of Madera. But as we discuss change and we discuss an interim city manager and as we discuss next steps, as we discuss the future of Madera and the opportunities before us, and I really mean that when I say opportunities because I think we have some outstanding opportunities before us. And so, it's vital that we choose our interim city manager wisely and carefully. Personally, I believe there's someone within our organization who can fill this role, someone who understands our city budget, someone who understands the intricacies and the complexities of that budget. I truly believe somebody that has excellent leadership qualities with experience in managing people, someone that has the support of his colleagues and staff, someone who is local and has exceptional rapport with other governing bodies, as we had just mentioned before, including a number of partners and stakeholders, someone that understands the vision of this council, but at the same time, is willing to bring a new and fresh perspective and not afraid to do so. With that, and there will be further discussion if need be, I would like to make a motion that we appoint our current Chief of Police, Mr. Steve Fraser, as our interim city manager. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, when we started our meeting, Pastor Votal opened it by asking that folks' voices be heard, hearts be felt, and truth be told. I think with Chief Fraser's leadership and what he's done at our police department, he's embodied those qualities, and I have the utmost confidence that he would do so as our interim city administrator. So, with that, I would second your motion.
Thank you very much for that. And with further discussion, Councilman Rigby.
In full disclosure, I would be remiss, it was mentioned earlier, in public comment by Ms. Sloan that I was contacted, and she wasn't the only one for a candidate that they were wishing, as a public, to see put into this position. I do not know the candidate personally. I cannot endorse the candidate. Apparently, the candidate reached out to you, Mr. I can't speak to that. I don't know that. I was not reached out to by this candidate. And so, with that, that's pretty much all I know about the candidate, other than there was history here in the city, but I don't know anything else about that candidate, so.
Councilman Hawley.
Second, I was reached out by another person as well. But I think the decision right now is, without discussing with the other council, would delude me to bring up this person's name unless I really wanted to see where we're going with this. I wasn't thinking that we was going to make a decision tonight for an interim, but to form an ad hoc committee to decide where we wanted to go. So, I'm lost for words.
Any other discussion, questions, or comments? Councilman Rodriguez.
Mayor Midillan, I too want to share your sentiment in regards to the person that you nominated, being someone that is local and understands the everyday operations through our organization. And I too feel that that is a strong candidate, so it's got my support. So, I want to thank you for bringing that up. Thank you, Mayor Midillan.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Chief. And as discussed this evening, there's lots of opportunity, lots of opportunity ahead of us, and I have no doubt that, again, albeit it's an interim position, that we will hit the ground running. We've heard from our constituency. We've heard comments and ideas, and we will continue to forge ahead and get things done. So, congratulations, Chief. We look forward to getting to work tomorrow morning, first thing.
And Mayor, don't forget.
An ad hoc committee.
An ad hoc committee.
Yeah, and before, I just want to pose a question, Mayor Midillan, I'm sorry. So, does that mean you come in uniform?
Maybe bits and pieces of his uniform he may keep with him. I'm not too sure.
Keep the gun.
With that, I do need to appoint an ad hoc committee to negotiate those terms. I would like, obviously, myself to be on that negotiating committee, as well as Councilman Oliver and Councilman Rigby to be part of that team.
Mr. Mayor, we were able to successfully negotiate a tax sharing agreement with the County of Madera, and having done that, I think that we could successfully do this as well.
As well as Measure K.
I'd be happy, I'd be honored to do so.
Thank you very much.
I accept.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Do you need that in the form of a vote? Brent?
That you can appoint them, that's fine.
That's the appointment. Thank you very much. I will now move into council reports, starting to my far right with Councilman Robinson.
Okay. Today, along with the mayor and other council members, we attended the Pomona Ranch ribbon-cutting. And it was very endearing to see some of the occupants that was there who gave their story. Like, for instance, one person was, became homeless because he lost his job. And like you know, many people are today are one paycheck from being homeless. So, it was a good thing that we was able to open a migrant housing for the homeless. Thank you.
Councilperson Gallegos.
Just real fast, I'm not sure if our community knows, but we had another retirement happen. Our CalFire chief, David Allen, retired after, how many years, Jim, in CalFire?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three years. So, his official retirement date was yesterday was his last day?
January.
January, but he will be back. He is committed to help build this new fire station that we're building with Measure K money. So, he has assured me that when we have our meetings with our architects and the community that he will be here to put input and make sure this station is up and running and the way it should be. So, congratulations to Chief David Allen.
Absolutely. Thirty-three years of service, that's fantastic. Great point. Thank you very much. Councilman Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I woke up this morning and was told by my morning news source that today was a monumental day. And though I don't live in Washington, DC, it was a monumental day for the City of Madera. We officially launched the Pomona Ranch project, and we were able to go out and celebrate today with partnering agencies, as well as the six families that we're serving right now at Pomona Ranch. And I just, I want to thank the staff and fellow councilmen who have helped, and women, who have helped kind of make this year special for one particular family. We adopted, as a City of Madera, Sonia, thank you for leading the charge, Matthew and his family, his wife and child-to-be, as well as their one-year-old child. And I appreciate, we provided a tree and several gifts and opportunities to go out for dinner as a couple because, as a young father, I know what it means to be able to leave the baby at home and get out for a night with your bride. And we weren't the only entity, we weren't the only person that did that. Several other agencies throughout the city adopted those families and are providing an incredible Christmas opportunity for the other five families that are out there. And it was a great day of celebration. I appreciate all the council members that joined us and the Board of Supervisors that joined us, as well as OMS sending down a representative from Sacramento to celebrate with us, as well as the other several agencies that are involved. You know, for weeks, I've listened, sitting on this dais and being in public, I've listened to the comment about how we're a poor city. And nothing makes me angrier than having people come up and tell me we're a poor city. We may not have the average income medium that some cities have, and I'll tell you what, we definitely have a little bit more money in our fund balance than a lot of cities have. But the one thing that we have that can't be given a monetary price is the ability to come together as a community. And I feel like there's been a lot in headlines recently that have helped bring division. I feel like there's a lot in this project that has brought hope and an opportunity to see families. Listening to one of the families give his testimony about how he was there and Councilman Robinson kind of alluded to it, I don't think there was a dry eye in the place, including his, as he spoke of with great gratitude. Thank you from the bottom of our heart. Our family, it was raining today during our ribbon-cutting, and that family would have been out in the rain otherwise. And how appropriate to have cut the ribbon in such weather conditions. And so, I just, those are the stories that deserve the headlines. Those are the stories that deserve local media's attention. I want to extend my gratitude, too, to Chief Fraser, and not only thanking you for stepping into the position in which you were given tonight, but for maintaining the position that you've held for so many years and watching how that professionalism has trickled down all the way down to the newest eleven members of our police body. That wasn't on the front page, but we have eleven new members, one of which I'm really proud of, Mr. Abraham, and a Madera boy, born and raised, graduate of Madera South, football player. He looks like one still, so that's good. But more importantly, I was excited to have heard the announcement made last night by Gino that we have apprehended and charged a man with murder, an attempted murder, because a sixteen-year-old lost his life this weekend. And Isaiah Huerta is a personal friend of my family's, and so, I was glad to have heard that those detectives, in less than, what, thirty-six hours, had the right guy. So, I applaud your efforts, Madera Police Department. Thank you so much for your work over this last weekend. And that's why you, the voters, voted for not a one-cent increase, but a half a cent increase. And you voted for it. We didn't tell you, you have to pay the taxes. We asked, would you like it? And you said yes, as a city. In fact, eighty percent of you voted for Measure K. And it's brought those police officers and it's allowed our detectives to have the resources they need to get guys that you've arrested for this murder off the streets. It's allowed us to build this new fire station, to purchase the new hook-and-ladder truck that's on its way. And so, for that, I applaud our police department. I'm on a roll. I'm going to keep going.
Keep going.
Because our city's interested in so many numbers and figures, I thought I'd share a few that may or may not have made the paper. Tonight, in our consent calendar, I'm sure it was overlooked, but the Parks and Rec Department received yet another grant. Mary Ann, thank you so much. Your team has been working relentlessly on finding new funding opportunities, as well as taking probably the hardest hit that any other department has taken this year with our budget cuts. I applaud your efforts. Fifty thousand dollars was awarded to you tonight. That's incredible. Because when you add up the total, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because when you add up the total amount of grants awarded, consulting services that you have provided through your agency, it comes up to one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars, I'm sorry, one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, five-hundred dollars in just, what, eighteen months, twelve to eighteen months? Grant-writing is easy. Taking a picture with a big check, that's easy. But then, having to make the reports and having to keep the demographics and having to keep all the information, that takes time, and that takes personnel. And so, I appreciate your team keeping all those numbers, keeping all those statistics because I know it's tedious. But it's because they do that work that we're able to apply again and again and again and receive those types of awards. And speaking of grants and dollars and numbers, our COPS grant was awarded to us recently. And so, Vet, thank you so much for providing that opportunity, working alongside with Chief, again, in the Madera Police Department. Three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is going to our police department to ensure the hiring of three officers, specifically with an emphasis on youth crime and delinquency programs.
Awesome.
These are just some of the numbers that you guys may miss. And I thought I'd take the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to share those numbers because these are some of the stories that, I don't know, I'd like to read about. But I understand that there's a job to do and that there's people to go and places to see. I want to close with this, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank David Thule. Tonight, it was hard to not see a guy that I've seen there since I've taken this oath. And I appreciate his leadership. I appreciate the job well done. You know, we sat with a prominent developer who has an office on Howard Road, but his name's King Hussein. And I say he's prominent because he's actually still building. And he was curious because he was wondering if the job that had been done at Freedom Park was in jeopardy now that David wasn't around because, you see, King and David had worked so hard together to see something like that happen. And we assured him that the City of Madera was pro-business. And hearing from so many of you guys today, we've got to keep Madera number one. That's my goal. And I appreciate the accountability, whether it's people standing on the corner with signs, coming in here and speaking in decorum. A lot of what we're celebrating now with these numbers, a lot of what we're talking about with growth, it couldn't have been done without the leadership of a man for over twenty-five years. Lived in Madera, served in Madera, loved Madera, was a part of service clubs, attended church in Madera. And I appreciate his leadership of understanding that sometimes you got to be a grandpa. And sometimes, it's time to go to the gun range a little more often than maybe he's used to. But I applaud the work of David Thule. No words I say will ever be able to express my gratitude, not just as a council member, but as a citizen of Madera, for the work that he's done and the willingness to give the unrelentless hours and the unforeseen time and the things that you guys will never ever understand, the pressures that he had to take on. I thank you, David Thule, whether you're watching or not. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well said. Thank you very much for that. Councilman Hawley.
Mr. Rigby, you took my thunder. I love you for that because I've worked with David for a long time as a planning commissioner and as a councilman. And he was and still is a great friend. I have an opportunity to work with his wife as well and find them to be good people. But my thoughts for the holiday season comes to this. I've lost a lot of family members from January to December. But as I sit here sometimes and look at all the work that the city does and to see the people who support us, sometimes, we don't do the right jobs for you, but we doing a job for you. And for you to come out here tonight and express your opinions makes us feel better because sometimes, we don't think nobody cares. Because sometimes, we don't think nobody cares. It took an article in the paper to get you here, but that's okay, you came. If it takes another article next year to have you come back, I hope you come back again. This council is not something that we take lightly. We have to go home as well, to our families, and ask the same questions that you asked us. Are we doing our job? We wouldn't be here, people who want to vote us out. This is what democratic is all about. You have the right to do whatever is on your heart, but you must vote. And if you don't vote, you really have nothing to say. This is what democratic is all about. Some of us might be here next year, some of us might not. Because life is not promised to everybody. And as I said, I have lost quite a few members this year. And it's been hard, but I still come here, because I still have a job to do for this city. I've been here all my life. I've been here 68 years, never moved away, never left here, I used to shine shoes, I know the streets up and down. But I love Madera, I take it to heart. When people say that we don't do our job, I just smile at them, because I know in my heart I'm doing my job. And to our city staff, I appreciate you. You open up your doors, you talk with us, you give us the tools that we need to give to our constituents, and that makes me happy. It may not be the ones that they want to hear, but it's the ones that we have to deal with. So to all of you, to my colleagues, I appreciate you. And I want all of you to know, I've been dealing with a lot. My wife is sick, but I still come here, because I know she's going to be taken care of. But when I come here, I want you to know that I appreciate you. You are what makes my city. Sure, we've got issues to challenge, we've got things we've got to get done, but if you just trust in your heart that you have selected the right people. It may sometimes don't look like it, but we're here to do the right job. When we go in behind doors, we have to come out with an answer. And an answer that I hope you understand that this is for our city. We need your support, we need your comments, and we need your understanding. So with that, I just thank all of you, wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you very much, Councilman Holly. Appreciate those kind words. Councilman Rodriguez.
Well, Councilman Holly, you definitely stole my thunder. I just wanted to say thank you. Actually, we got, it was noted earlier that Madera Votes did visit with several of us here at the council. For the record, they visit us independently. As I was coming in, I got a tag from Mayor Midland. And obviously, you know, the questions that you posed, you know, that's what we're here for, you keep us accountable. So I appreciate the fact that you allowed us to be there. Again, you know, I think your organization is great to go out there and inform, and when you feel you need answers, then come to the council. And this is what the platform is there for, is to be able to give public comments so that we can listen to you. So thank you, appreciate you holding us accountable, and appreciate you giving us the time to meet with you. You know, I also had an opportunity to go out to the Housing Authority, the Pomona Grand Opening. And you know, what strikes me the most is after I hear the comments from former Chair Rigby, you know, if you thought that was inspiring, you know, you should have seen out there in that 40-degree weather, two kids running around, his wife next to him, and really being able to put something out there. You know, I appreciate those kind words, and frankly, just the energy that he puts into the, that he put into that project. And I want to commend him and now Chair Will Oliver for really putting together that project, I think, in collaboration with all other commissioners and staff. I want to appreciate that. But truly, former Chair Rigby, I really appreciate your comments that you said today, that prayer that you made today was very inspiring. I think, like you said, for me, it really was heartfelt. And I think for most of those families that were there, where would they be if it had not been for this project? So I do appreciate that, thanks again. And I think the proper way, I'm not sure if this is, but happy holidays to everybody. I mean, all of you guys, enjoy your holidays. I won't see you until next year, so enjoy your holidays. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Oliver.
Try to keep it brief, Mr. Mayor. I think my colleagues' reports have taken any thought I could share and said it much more eloquently than I could ever do. First, I just want to say, Chief Frazier and Interminister Frazier, I have the utmost confidence, again, that you will lead this city as head of our police department. You have lent an ear to our community, and you provide an eye to its future. And I know you're going to do the same as leading our great city now. But I wanted to extend my thanks to staff. I know that change can have its uncertainty at times, but you've stayed focused, you've kept your head down, you have continued to lead your departments and your staff. For those of you that are in those supervisor management positions, you've continued to try to maintain that rapport and that confidence, and I don't think we can thank you enough. And I want to, and just by sharing some other good news that we received last Friday, as part of the Madera County Transportation Commission, we serve on that board with Caltrans representatives, and we became aware that there would be potential grant funding coming down the pipeline, especially with the passage of SB 1 of the Transportation Funding Bill. And Yvette went very hard to work on this grant application, and she didn't go at it alone. She engaged her peers at the Transportation Commission, as well as the county, as well as us up here, and Caltrans, to land that grant, which would be a sustainable communities grant, looking at our downtown, looking at Yosemite Avenue, which currently belongs to the state of California. And in my opinion, that has clouded our ability to affect change there and make investments there, and to look at business owners in the eye and say that we support you. And she was successful in getting that grant award, $272,000 last Friday. It was one of three in the district. And I will add that the city of Fresno applied for two and didn't get one. But I want to thank you, Yvette, and your staff, as well as your colleagues, and those that report to you, and those that serve with you for our great city. I have so much confidence in you all moving forward. So again, I just wanted to extend that thanks, it cannot be said enough, and I wish your families, as well as everyone here this evening, a very happy holidays and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I need to change the rules and go first next time, because it's very difficult to follow those six reports. My very dear friend Lance Leach, who's an avid baseball fan, fan of sports in general, and I had the opportunity to coach with him, he always used to say, "The cream rises to the top." During adversity, the cream rises to the top. And I can assure this community that where some may feel we're up against adversity, I can assure you that we are about to rise, that we are about to take this opportunity and continue to rise. I will say it again, the input and the people here at City Hall that give of their time just days before the holidays and away from their family to come down here and give us that input, we are nothing if we are not transparent and open to those ideas and suggestions. So I really do mean it when I say, signs or no signs, if you want to come down to City Hall and express your concerns, I encourage you to do so. Personally, I have been very accessible to everybody, and I will continue to do so. And I'm sure I can speak for the council when I say, at any opportunity given, they will do the same. Only together can we get things done like Pomona Ranch and Measure K, and the number of things that were listed before. Speaking of Pomona Ranch, it was, it was absolutely incredible this morning to see these families move into a shelter that they would otherwise be out in the cold. But I want to share briefly a story that my mother shared with me, who was in the audience today, by the way, back there by Dino. And in the late '70s, when she got on council in the early '80s, she was part of a team, much like the team we have now, in having somebody donate the land for Pomona Ranch, but didn't have the funds to build anything on Pomona Ranch. And so with that team, and beating the bushes, and working diligently and tirelessly, and even going to Washington DC to fight for those funds, they received these funds to build Pomona Ranch, which changed the way that we do business with our farm labor folks here at the city of Madera. And it was through those efforts, 35-plus years ago, on what else can we do to help people here in the city of Madera that were then passed on to the next generation, and even, in some cases, a couple of generations. So I can't say enough about the leadership that I have the privilege of being a part of my entire life, practically. And I bring that here to this dais, in that I am nothing if not transparent, nor I am nothing if I don't listen to the people of Madera. And so I think we are about to put our best foot forward. I know we are about to put our best foot forward. And I'm excited about 2018 and the things to come. I'm excited to work with this council and continue to do so, not for you, but with you. So I too want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I hope to see you back here very, very soon. With that, we will go into closed session. I will ask Mr. Richardson to make an announcement. Mom, thanks for coming.
Yes, Mayor. The council will now adjourn to closed session in two items. The first is conference with legal counsel in anticipated litigation, that's significant exposure litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, Subdivision D2 in one matter. The second item is public employee dismissal or release pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.
Thank you very much.